Good evening. I will call this meeting to order. If you would kindly rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you kindly call the roll?
Ellenson.
Here.
Carmody.
Here.
Fishbein.
Here.
Laffin.
Here.
Regan.
Here.
Reynolds.
Here.
Tada.
Here.
Testa.
Marone.
Here. All present and accounted for. I'll accept a motion on the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve or accept consent agenda items 3A through 3T as amended.
Second. Motion is made in second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion is unanimous. Mr. Rusick, you were reappointed to the zoning board of appeals. Would you like to come forward and get sworn in? And thank you for your service. Number four, items removed from the consent agenda. There are none. Moving on to number five, public question and answer. Any questions for the council? Mr. Comerford?
Bill Comerford, Broadview Drive. At the last meeting, I asked about the status update about the crack at Doolittle Park Basketball Court. Do we have an update with that?
So I'm aware that there is a crack. Mayor, did you have anything to add?
Yeah, I've been there twice since that meeting and was able to identify it. It appears it's barely a crack in the surface coat. I'm told that at one point it was more open, but it appears that the gap has receded, that it's shrunk. Actually, I visited three times and one of the times I got there, I couldn't go on the court because there was a game going on quite actively. But I've identified it and I believe Mr. Michaels at Rec has identified it as well. We'll be in touch with the vendor.
Okay, so just to give you an update, as I stated at that last meeting, I've got pictures of where that whole slab is blown out of the ground by four inches. The crack goes all the way through and it's quite a big gap because as the frost pushed it up, it pushes it out, just like your sidewalks do. Since the frost is no longer in the ground, your whole slab came back together and that's why you're not seeing it. I've got plenty enough pictures. I'll send them to you guys actually, now that it has been looked at. But also, and I'm somewhat familiar with concrete. When you look at the picture, when a form is put up, you're supposed to use some type of vibrator, whether it's a manual one or whatever, so that you take all the air out of the concrete. Otherwise, it will start to deteriorate quicker. Pictures that I have don't show that whatsoever. So it would be questionable. So what I would like to see, since I myself and other members of the public have either representative from Classic Turf, the town engineer, somebody have this agenda put on the agenda, excuse me, have this item put on the agenda, so we can actually get some answers. And just for the record, Classic Turf was sold October 2024. So I don't know if that has any bearing on contracts. I'm hopeful that our town attorney looked at the contract because it says that they warranty crack-free, crack-free for 20 years. Also, when I was here last meeting, I asked about what the sidewalk policy is. And Mary, you said you were going to look into it and get back to us. Did you happen to have a chance to look at that and what exactly is the policy?
We had an initial meeting on it. We're going to have a follow-up meeting.
So we don't know what the policy is as we stand here today?
Sidewalks are examined.
Okay. Again, I'm trying to find out what the tolerances are. Elevation shift panels and that kind of thing, because they have to be ADA compliant. And going back to the basketball courts and the tennis courts, not one of them is ADA compliant, including the one, the tennis court that's been there for four or five years. It's not handicap accessible at all. And that's part of the compliance. When you put anything new in, it's got to be ADA compliant. I believe that Councilor Fishbein brought up the same fact with the playground or the swing sets down at Wallace Park. None of those are ADA compliant either. So I'd like to see something addressed with all those. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else with a question for the council? All right, moving on. Discussion of old business. Mayor, Mr. Farrell, do we have an update on Hiddenburg Lane?
As I said last meeting, Attorney Corporal Counsel Small has is on the agenda for the April planning and zoning meeting. She's made some suggestions to the parties. I think it'll move forward, but it remains to be seen. But she's on the agenda to brief them.
Okay, thank you very much. Mayor, do you have an update on community poll?
Yes, the bid was advertised this past Thursday and it is on the portal to accept bids.
Okay, excellent. And Mayor, an update on the town building maintenance assessment?
I believe those were received by the Director of Public Works late last week. So I believe they are in.
Okay, excellent. The fire department study is mine, or is the council's. So that has been, the parties have been speaking with one another, the parties being the fire department and the study folks, and so the study is ongoing. Moving on to number seven, discussion of possible action regarding the letters sent to nonprofit organizations. So I sent the letter that was worked on with the subcommittee in terms of the items that we were recommending to ask for in our letter to the not-for-profits. Does anyone have any comments or questions on the letter? Mr. Laffin?
Yeah, thank you. And thank you to Chairman Marone, Councilor Reynolds, and Councilor Regan for working on it. I have some comments about the letter itself, but the underlying theme repeats what I stated at the last meeting, that I don't think there's enough time to do this this year. In the very first line, we talk about agencies or organizations, but throughout the rest of the document, agency and organization is used interchangeably, it appears. I don't know if there was an intended difference understood between the two when you were drafting it, or if it should be changed to say agency or organization throughout. Some, all are organizations, but not all might qualify as an agency.
Yeah, that's a fair point. I don't have a recollection that we made a distinction between the two. I would defer to the other two gentlemen if they have a different recollection. Mr. Reynolds?
No, I am.
Okay, no, good suggestion.
And then in option number, question number one, I guess, or request number one. Statement explaining your agency's planned use of town funds and the potential impact of, it should be of funding. I don't know, to impact if funding is not received. Okay. That, that's a great question. Is, are we not going to have hearings like last year? Like when we might ask that normally?
So.
Or a presentation?
Yeah, I mean, my plan was not to have hearings. So my plan was to have limited hearings, right?
Yep.
So to bring in sort of the major players. Because as you had identified in the last meeting, you know, the financial impact of some of these groups is is not huge on the town budget. However, I, you know, would be kind of a good idea to know where we're spending our money, right? So my thought was to not bring in all of these groups for hearings, but certainly the council could request any particular, you know, item, or any particular group or town agency if they wanted to speak to them at this time.
But we're going to ask all of the organizations and agencies to supply the statement?
Correct.
Okay. Are we going to ask of the town departments in general the same?
Well, I think the difference would be like the police department. I have an expectation of what is that they do, right, and what they're going to accomplish. So I think, you know, if it was social services and you wanted to know what does this particular program do, I think that's a fairly, you know, reasonable question. I also think we have a certain access with town departments that we wouldn't have with these groups, right?
Sure. And my concern is that when we we get through all this massive email dump or exchange, whatever we end up having, and we get down to the motions meeting, the key or the right departments won't be here or there at the right time. And then we're all put on the spot with trying to understand what is going to happen if we don't give them X amount of dollars versus, well, we're asking here, I think that's a great question. Because again, all of the social service allocations on that one page in particular, that's 70% of 1% of our budget. So it's 0.7%. We could easily strike that from, you know, an $8 or $9 million fire department budget. And that's a larger percent, but that would have a huge impact. So I'm just curious, you know, how far we go in in nitpicking or poking, but that's fine. So we're not going to have hearings. That was part of my question for that too. On in number two, agency budget, great. Recent financial statements, is that, how is, how would that be defined by some of these varying documents, checking accounts, savings account, investment accounts? AR reports?
Yeah, so in the discussion with Janice, we specifically took out the word bank accounts because I think, you know, there's a level of detail there that really wouldn't be helpful to us. So I think a financial statement is just that. Give us a profit-loss statement or explain to us.
Profit-loss statement?
I mean, that's how I would define it, but I think that depending on what your organization does, there could be some variance in what that might look like.
Will we, or will the agency have an opportunity for back and forth to acquire documents if they're not satisfactory based on, I mean, so, so what I'm hearing is that a profit-loss statement for, or a nonprofit-loss statement for one organization might work, but for another, it's not and we need more. So I'm just trying to figure out how do we communicate as a council to these bodies for the first time in decades that certain documents are required of some organizations, but not of others?
Sure. You know, let me address your other point too. So you had, we had a question of time, right?
Yep.
So I think this is an evolving process, right?
Yeah.
And so I think the goal, at least from my perspective, is to sort of understand where the town spends their money, right? So in terms of time, the administration's always been kind enough to sort of like direct where these letters went in the past, right?
Yeah.
But technically, we don't get the budget till April 1.
Right.
So the mayor really doesn't owe us anything in terms of information until April 1, right? Separate branch of government. So the idea that the letter could go out before that is a little bit difficult because we rely entirely on the administration to say like, these are the groups that need to get the the letter, right? So he could add or delete any groups that he wanted to from his budget.
It's also six days from now.
Understood.
Yeah.
Right. So the time is really, the relevant time to send this really is after April 1, when we're actually a part of this conversation, right?
Right.
So the 0.7% sort of gets to the heart of the issue here, which is anytime you start to ask about accountability, people get squeamish, right? And I completely understand how that works. I understand it's a small part of the budget. I understand that if we ask tough questions, people are going to have to give us some tough answers. And we're going to be put in positions where we're going to have to make decisions we're not going to like. But when you run for council, part of the reason you run for council is because you want to, you know, put on the big boy pants and make these kinds of decisions, right? So as a larger discussion, the mayor and I at the agenda meeting had a discussion about what does the future of this look like, right? Because this process we have now, you know, sort of leans towards tradition and sort of how we've always done it. And so I think, you know, I could see a plan in the future potentially where we had, it was more like grants, where you had a pile of money that we were looking to spend from, and we have groups apply for a grant and grant money that way, right?
Like Meriden does.
Right, exactly. And so it doesn't have to necessarily be a function of the month of budget. It could be a function of, you know, a year-round project where you, the money gets funded at a certain time of the year in the budget, but the money could get dispensed at different times of the year. So just some of the ideas of how I think this could be going forward.
Are we doing that? Are we in talks to do that this year though?
Well, like I say, the mayor and I have just had a couple of preliminary conversations about it. So are we in talks to do it right now?
Right.
No, we're not. But I mean, you know, we have to look at the, this is an evolving process, right?
Yeah.
And so I'm not sure what this is going to look like next year. It's already different from last year and a little different next year again.
And I 100% agree it's an evolving process, which is my concern, is that it will have the budget in about six days. The letter ends with, "The council will approve the proposed budget on May 13, 2025. Therefore, the information requested, which will, if we're lucky, be out on day zero, right? Therefore, the information requested should be received by the town council in sufficient time to review your data prior to that date." May 13 is the vote. We have motion meetings before that. We have discussion meetings before that. We have motion meetings that go on for hours. And then we get to the final vote and everything's different again meetings. Like, I just, so even if everything else stays the same or nobody agrees with me on anything, May 13th, like if I'm an organization, I might be like, oh, if I get this in on May 10th or 12th, like are we going to be following up with the organizations? Are we going to have a liaison going after everybody now as a legislative body if we're going to be a partner in the process? And this is what we're asking. This is all stuff that I'm trying to figure out now that we have four weeks to get to this, to get to this answer. I agree with the whole evolving process thing and that's the whole crux of my argument is that I think unless we break up this letter with, "This year we'd love this, but beyond notice, next year we're going to be asking for this, this, and that," that might be more fair, given that, well, item number five, a certificate of legal assistance, existence from the Connecticut Secretary of State. That's actually kind of more of a business thing. Department of Consumer Protection handles charities and nonprofits in a different unit, and they don't have a certificate of legal assistance, existence the same way. Which for everybody else is just kind of a statement from the state saying that you're on good terms with your taxes and your everything else. But maybe we want to know from our law department and our tax department whether they're on good terms with us. They have their own state issues that they're going to have to talk to them about, that they're getting grants from or not getting grants from. So I think we should at least somehow include, if not totally exclude, the state part. I mean, if you're interested, you could leave it. But what's going on in our own, our own town? So I have more, but I don't know if you want me to?
No, fire away.
Okay. The organization's most recent Form 990. So a Form 490 is commonly used, right, for nonprofit organizations. They're required five months to be filed, about five months after the end of the fiscal year for that organization. If an organization's fiscal year ends in December, they're not, or January, January 1, they're not required to file until May 15th or whatever, which is two days after. So it's more of an FYI, like is the council going to be okay with a document that would be 363 days old and not then be jumping on them for something more recent? I just, it's just something out there. The 990 is the 990. I just want to make sure that everybody's aware of what the 990 actually is. Because in the past, we've gotten stuck on the 990 with where some of it goes, but it's a snapshot in time for that year, and a lot can change in that time. The comprehensive statement detailing all ARPA funding. I'm opposed to that line entirely, that part. The ARPA is a whole different process that the law department and everybody's auditing and watching and taking care of. So we're going to repeat it? Like, and supposedly the ARPA funding was for a specific element or project that should be kind of in its own cocoon or encapsulated. Again, others may disagree, but that's just my thought on that. And I, and I get the, where does the rest of your money come from or in-kind benefits from the town and whatnot? So, I mean, those are some of my concerns. I know that, I mean, I can see some of you nodding your heads. I know that you might agree with me on the fairness of the timeliness of this. And I know that a vote against this at this time in this way, or I don't know if we're going to vote on it. It's more of just a, we're just going to kind of agree that the chairman sends the letter out. That some sort of action from us might look like, oh, you don't want to hold all these organizations accountable. I just think if we're going to hold them accountable, we should do it responsibly. And either by giving them forewarning that next year this is what we expect, or we get in at the beginning of the budget process, December, January, whenever those letters go out, to work with the administration. If we are to be a partner in the budgeting processes, as we believe we are, right? Then we should be requesting the same information, not giving them three weeks' notice to drop off, to gather some of the stuff. Some of these organizations are getting like $3,500. Some are getting $100,000. But for, you know, was it the literacy group? They're getting $3,500, $5,000, whatever it is. Like this could be a lot of work for them to run around for in a week or two. And, but if they had time to gather it, they don't have large staffs either. I'm just thinking that I agree, all the information's great. You can't argue that it's not. But I think time is the issue. And trying to squeeze it in in the next couple of weeks, sorry, in the next couple of days is pretty rough. So that's it for now. I'll probably have more comments as other people are talking.
Yeah, I mean, I think if you look at the history of this, we've sent this letter out every, for the past bunch of years, right? And we have very inconsistent data from the different groups. And the council has been reluctant to hold them accountable in the past, at least for the data, right? So I don't, I can't envision this council, based on this year, taking a completely different standard with this letter than we've taken in the past, right? But I think it is a good sort of opening to a larger discussion about where are we spending our money. You know, 0.7% or not, you know, a lot of the decisions we make come down to, you know, we ask a lot of questions about things that are like $5,000, $4,000, $5,000, right? So, you know, to me, responsibility starts, it always starts small. I mean, you have to watch the small numbers to get to the big numbers, right? So that's kind of where I am with that. Who's next? Councilor Fishbein?
I think Councilor Laffin for his comments. You know, first of all, next year, it's a new council. And while, you know, we've been sending out this letter every year for almost a decade now. It shouldn't be, shouldn't be new to anybody, but you know, new council may decide differently. So can we do that now? Yeah, we could do that now. Well, not now because we've got all the budget in front of us, but in this budget session, you know, the mayor is going to present a proposed budget to us without this backup, right? We could take the items that we're sort of earmarking here and shift them to an account and approve the budget in that fashion. And then have that process. So, you know, I think it's possible for us to do that. Question one, I would want to know, as we did with ARPA, the potential impact upon walling for residents. I think, I don't think it was clear enough with regard to that. The the impact, Councilor Laffin was talking about the impact upon the entity for the money and whether or not we were going to go to other town departments. You know, one of the most frustrating parts about this process is the Board of Education has a proposed budget that they present to the mayor. The mayor invariably cuts it. We never hear what the effect of those cuts will be. I've asked them year after year, you know, you have to analyze that. And the answer I get is, well, we'll figure that out after you guys do what you got to do. So, you know, that's a major part of the budget and I would be in favor of those questions being asked in the interim. As far as the backup, I'm very strong on the backup. I think the backup is very important here. You know, I would be looking for bank statements, last bank statements for all accounts, approved budget and a P and L from last year. Because what we're looking to do is to put pieces together. And when I've done this with other groups, you get a representation as to what the money's going to be used for. And then you look at the budget and you're like, well, this doesn't work together, right? The entity has already approved the budget by the time we get to budget time. So you would hope that the pieces come together. And we want to make sure, I mean, I would want to make sure that there's not a lot of money floating out around there before somebody's relying upon taxpayer dollars to to pay for a project. The certificate, you know, I don't know what the intent was there, to find out about the taxes or just that they exist as an entity. So I'll leave that out there. The 990s, the problem with 990s, you know, and I've analyzed 990s with regard to businesses that have income in excess of $50,000 in a year. But as some of us know, I think $50,000 is the threshold. It's either 50 or 25. If it's one of those two numbers, the 990 is just a card. It's a nothing, right? So I think the other documents that I was talking about, you know, an approved budget, bank record, P and L, is a lot more important than a 990, especially for those small organizations. And I just wanted to, you know, respectfully correct, ARPA was not for, not just for specific projects. We did give ARPA for specific projects, but we also give hardship grants for entities that proved to the satisfaction of the body that they had been negatively impacted. And we didn't have constraints upon that so much. It was like to fill their coffers, so to speak, in many occasions. There's one that comes to mind. They were going to run fundraisers. Normally run fundraisers, weren't unable to do that and they still had expenses. So they took from their their bank account, depleted their bank account. So essentially what we did through ARPA is we replenished their bank account. It wasn't a particular project. So I think it is similar to ARPA to a certain extent, but those are my comments. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Testa.
Still looking for the button underneath. Sorry. You know, honestly, my concern with all of this is for the small, all the little sports leagues in town. I understand the, and share the interest in making sure that we're, you know, we're giving an organization 50, $100,000, 20, whatever it is. You know, you want to make sure that, you know, you're doing your due diligence. But I'm concerned about the, you know, the little league that we give $3,500 to. And and it leads me to wonder about the following. When you put, when you request a bunch of information and by implication are stating that you're going to use that information to make a decision, you need to have criteria. And we don't have any of that. And I'll give you an example because it came up in our discussions. We were talking about, and I think it might have been one of the leagues. It may not have been. Whatever, a year, two, three years back, whatever. And we discovered that, you know, there was a good amount of money in a bank account. But what happens with these leagues is you, you have your annual operating expenses to run. And then you may have projects down the road. You know, we're going to build, we're going to do something on the fields. It's going to cost us $25,000. So we have to start raising money and try to develop that, that special project account separate from our operating expenses. And we determine what the dues for the league are based on the operating expenses. So if we were to say to a league, oh, you know, you want $3,500, you have $40,000 in the bank. They would, well, that's because we are going to buy batting cages in three years. That costs 60. I'm making that up, obviously. But that, that's how they run. So my question would be, what is the, what are the criteria we're going to use when we analyze that situation? Is it anytime someone has money in the bank, we're going to quote unquote, hold it against them or expect them to use that for operating expenses? Or did they have to explain it clearly and we feel good about it? Well, you feel free to write that, those criteria. So that's what I'm concerned about. What is the intent? What are people's feelings about this? When we talk about these small organizations? When we talk about these small organizations, do they have all this stuff? And I apologize for not recalling, but do we have a copy of the existing letter that has been said we've been sending out? I don't remember what we were asking for, but I don't believe it had this much detail, but I might be wrong. So, I mean, what's a certificate of legal existence from the Secretary of State for Wallingford Little League? They don't have that? Do they have an, I don't know, do they do nine-nineties? I just don't know. But it's a Little League. And we, for years, we've decided we want to support the various sports leagues by giving them a little bit of a contribution each year, so that, in hopes that their operating expenses, you know, are a little bit lower, and it makes it more available to all of the residents who may not have fifty dollars or thirty-five dollars to play, or who knows what it is nowadays. And I know they all have their own personal programs for those people who may not be able to afford it. Now, is that a separate fund that they keep? So how much into their business do we expect to get? And then what are the criteria when we're going to make judgments on that? That's what I'm worried about, not the hundred thousand dollar people, because I know we're going to get into details on them. That's my worries about this. Thank you.
I appreciate the comments, and they're great questions. I don't believe in the past the sports leagues have ever gotten the letter, or have ever gotten data from the sports leagues, but I could be mistaken. I know that there was a representation in the past that, you know, the rec department has certain needs to fill in terms of sports leagues, and so that's why they have that grant program. In terms of these specific questions, these are actually a whittling down of the questions we had in the prior letter. So the prior letter asked for bank statements and things like that, which we kind of took out. So this is more of a refinement of the last letter. There's not really a lot of stuff in here, with the exception perhaps ARPA, that wasn't present in some form in the old letter, right? So this is really less than we had before. So what are we going to do with the information? I mean, that's up to the council, right? Like, I'm one of nine, so I'm saying, this is the information, you know, I am the subcommittee, this is what we should ask for. What the council does from there is up to the nine of us. So, but we have, you know, in the past, we haven't really done anything with it, so I'm just trying to sort of be more thoughtful about this process. And, you know, I don't see this is, I think the fear is that this is going to make a, like, organizations are going to have their money taken away, right? But the other thing could be, you could be an organization out there that deserves money for something that doesn't have a conduit to get the money for that thing, that serves a need that we need to fill. For example, someone reached out to me about a youth program that I thought sounded pretty neat, that was sort of like right in the sweet spot of what's, things that we're looking to find programs for, right? So that could be the way that our organization, if we had sort of a grant program, that could be the way an organization could get money for something that's not necessarily in the traditional list of places we've always given money to. If that makes sense? Anyone else? Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you to Counselor Laffin for going through the letter. My recollection of the pairing down of the items, I believe, I thought we had ended on four and not five, and I'm not sure where that was, and I had thought the ARPA piece had been taken out, and we had talked about something with respect to use of other outside entities. But I don't disagree with, and the reason why I wanted to help with this was because I was concerned with the number of things that we were going to be requesting from people, so I thought that it would be good to be involved. And I think we, I think we pared it down nicely, but I do, one of the things I thought we talked about was essentially, like, some of this stuff might be a little bit duplicatious. Like, for example, if you have a nine-ninety, then you probably don't need that certificate, right? Because like, one probably, and I thought we talked about that when we were pairing, because there were nine things that we were looking at, and I thought we pared it down to four. So I'm not, and I just saw the draft of what we came up with today. So, you know, I, like I said, I appreciate the second set of eyes. But to get at the heart of what I think we're doing here, and to the chair's point about what future plans could be, I think this isn't a bad step towards doing that. I also agree that it's a tight timeline. I don't know, I don't know if I would want as much information that, you know, Counselor Fishbein is requesting, unless we were to go one step further with a grant program. Then you would need to know intent and budget and so forth. But in some of these cases, some of the information that we might be requesting, for example, if we use the Columbus House example, their overall budget, their overall whatever, has very, 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 very little to do with the actual running of the shelter itself and the money they get. So what we would see wouldn't necessarily give us any useful information. So I'm not dis, I think it's, like I had said initially, I think more information is better. I think getting information from people when they get money from the town is a fair practice. And I think that people, when, you know, asked, should be able to present appropriate information. But, you know, my intent is to try to keep it to a bare minimum, especially in light of, you know, recreational, things like that, the literacy program that receives a small amount. But again, when, in the larger amounts, then absolutely, we do, you know, we should do our due diligence. But, you know, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just briefly. I think it's necessary that with some of these entities, we have contracts. If representation is being made as to what money is going to be used for, I'm still very bent out of shape over the Columbus House thing. And I'm hoping that at some point, we can have an actual discussion on that. I would appreciate, and we've, except for one, which I'll get to in a moment, we've never had a representation by any of the league groups that the money is utilized to provide for individuals and families that cannot afford to participate. I would be all over that. We have never, and we have sent those letters to the league groups. The only group, I've been up here a while, the only group that has represented is the Jay Reardon with the summer camp, where every year, they send us a letter, and they say, you know, because of your contribution last year, ten young men or women were able to attend summer camp that they wouldn't have been able to. And every year, I'm very happy to see that letter, and I'm like, yep, checkmark, you know, they, I'm good, you know? But nobody, I mean, when Larry Russo was up here, Larry said that they would use the money to front their insurance, and then they would get the insurance when the parents paid, you know? So we were fronting it, and then I was like, well, why don't we get the, you know, if we're fronting the money, let's just get the money back at the back end, since they're charging the families for it anyway, you know? So I would very much appreciate if that's what the money was going to be used for. And maybe the letter says, you know, how many underprivileged children are going to benefit from this, you know? And then we put it in a contract, you know? I would find that to be a great benefit of taxpayer dollars, so I just wanted that known. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counselor Tatta.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did have a question about the bank statement, so it sounds like from what you said, the committee decided that we are not including bank statement requests, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and that was, you said you talked to the law department about that? What was that discussion?
So she didn't think it was a legal issue per se, as much as the type of information you can glean from a bank statement isn't really relevant to the, to what the information we're trying to obtain.
Okay, so I might suggest, I know we had talked about, Counselor Laffin was talking about the financial statements, we could maybe define financial statements as a profit and loss statement and balance sheet. I think that would kind of encompass what we're looking for, because just a P and L doesn't really give you a whole picture, you really need that balance sheet to see what all the assets are. So I think those two, and those are pretty readily available for any organization, I mean, those are pretty simple, basic statements. So if we want to add profit and loss and balance sheet, I think that might cover that. As far as the timeline of the letter, I'm actually in favor of this. I don't think we should be sending this out before the mayor's budget, because we don't know who the mayor might include. So we're not, we don't know at this point who's receiving money in the mayor's budget. So I think for us to send our letter out prior to that is premature. So maybe we might end up sending it to a group that the mayor has no intention of giving money to, or vice versa. So I think the timing is appropriate, that we send this once we see who is named in the mayor's budget. And it shouldn't be that big of a hardship. I mean, this stuff is pretty, it's pretty basic info, this really shouldn't be that much of a hardship. I mean, I'm thinking about, like, for our business, I could probably put this together in, I don't know, two, three hours. It's not, for an established organization or agency, this shouldn't be a hardship. If they're asking for money, there has to be an acknowledgement that there's going to be a little bit of work on their part, it's not just a windfall. So if we're asking for some information, and it takes them a few hours to put it together, and they get a hundred thousand dollars based on that two hours, then I don't think that's an unfair ask. As far as the need for this money, I agree with Counselor Fishbein about the sports teams, for example, if a child has a need, I would, you know, obviously, we would all, I think most taxpayers would agree, that's a good use of our money. We want children to be able to participate. And there's a lot of programs where I think these organizations are performing a role that the government could not do as efficiently or as inexpensive. So for me, that's, I think, what the whole goal of this would be. It's not, I don't look at this as government money, this is taxpayer money, this is the people's money. So I really don't care what the amount is, if it's a small amount, a big amount, I want to make sure every single dollar is used to perform a vital service to Wallingford residents in a way the government could not do as cheaply or efficiently. And I think that's the goal of this whole thing. So there's a lot of minutia here, but I'm, that's how I'm looking at it. We want to make sure that every dollar that we spend of taxpayer money is being spent in an efficient way and given to groups that need the money, not that just they've always received it and they're just expecting every year to receive it again. We want to make sure that we're spending this money wisely. So I think that's the whole crux of this. I did take note of some of the edits that were mentioned, so if we, I don't know, I can go through and maybe we can just kind of see if these are just easily editable. So to Counselor Laffin's point about agency or organization, I think we could just change anywhere it says either of those to agency or organization, that seems like a simple fix. I think everyone would be okay with. The financial statements, just defining that as profit and loss and balance sheet, could clear that up. Number one, I believe this was Counselor Fishbein's suggestion, it says potential impact, if funding is not received, we might want to edit that to potential impact to Wallingford residents if funding is not received. And I think those were the only direct edits. As far as the sports and the contracts, that, I'm not sure how we would put that into this, that might have to come later on. So if everyone's good with those edits, I mean, I can make a motion that we accept the letter with those revisions, if that's appropriate? If anyone wants to second that?
Second. Okay, so just, and I'll send everyone a revised copy of this, but so just to be clear, so in item number one, then, it's going to say impact, and we're going to add the word to Wallingford residents. Number two is going to read your agency or organization's budget, most recent financial statements, comma, preferably a profit and loss or balance sheet? And then I think that's it. Was there another?
Number four, it says your organization, we could change that to agency or organization.
Yep, thank you.
Can I just suggest, and it's just a yes or no question for the letter, will the proceeds be used to provide services for an underprivileged individual residing in Wallingford, something like that? I don't want to keep it just to kids, because not all these entities service just kids. I don't know, I mean, I would, it's not going to be in their backup, I mean, and it's just a yes or no, so.
So, that seems a little in the weeds for me, but I'd willing to hear the thoughts on it.
Well, along the lines with what Counselor Tatta was talking about, I mean, it's like something, you know, Counselor Testa mentioned it, that, you know, he thinks that's what money's being used for. I'd like to know that that's money, money's being used for that. If they say no, I mean, the no is no, but if maybe it makes the entity take a look at what they're, you know, what money they're getting and perhaps creating a program, or, I don't know, I just throw that out there.
Thank you. Counselor Regan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In response to Counselor Fishbein's question, would that not be covered if we, in number one, change it to potential impact to community if funding is not received and leave it at that? I mean, that's a, you can provide your mission statement and who you're, who you're serving and what portions, but there's other issues, you know, your Little League, if it's a binary question and a yes or no, it becomes a point of, you know, fill in the blank, really, or just check off a box without really meaning. Whereas putting it in the community section for number one gives some context, at least, to the applicant recipient organization or agency to make that reference as far as an impact statement in number one.
I mean, I would think for, like Little League, not to speak for them, but a response that wouldn't get to the heart of what I'm looking at would be, we would have to charge the parents five dollars more for registration. Still doesn't answer the question as to whether or not, you know, underprivileged individuals are going to get the benefit of the money, right? So I prefer direct questions.
Thank you, Counselor, Mr. Regan, you're also up? All right, thank you. Counselor Testa.
Good evening, sir. I didn't say that that's what the money's being used for. If I implied that, I apologize. I was just coming up with a couple of examples to just say, they could be setting aside money each year for that reason, they could be setting it aside for other reasons. The last thing I wanted to do was lead, have that lead to this becoming the first criterion that I was talking about. I didn't say that, okay? Now, if you want to start adding that in, you're going a whole nother place, but please don't present it as something that I proposed.
Thank you. Counselor Reynolds.
So I was involved with the soccer league for a lot of years, and I know that they received money from the town each year, and I can say that the way that that organization operates, similar to probably Little League and others, is that the, well, let me, let me just first, I'll toot the horn of Wallingford Soccer Club. Wallingford Soccer Club is an affordable option for kids to play soccer in the middle of an area where it's much more expensive to play in other towns, because they actually hire coaching staff. It's voluntary run, I mean, it's volunteer run, it's a volunteer build, and so that money that they would get each year, my guess, would probably go into the overall operating costs, and in part allows them to keep it affordable for kids. And then they do other things to which they don't get any money back from. For example, and I mentioned this in prior meetings, but I'll say it again, because I know Little League and other leagues do the same, they've invested substantially in our parks, they take care of our parks. So the money that they get, that three thousand dollars, it's not like, and to the point of where it comes from, we're talking about the Youth and Social Services letters, these go out, that money comes from Park and Rec, which is, I'm guessing is kind of the same mechanism, since it's taxpayer money, but it's different. But I don't, you know, the money that they receive, obviously, would probably go into their overall operating costs. And that includes, you know, for example, maybe it helps them keep an office open in town so that they can have meetings, and then they can have, you know, uniform handouts like we used to do, you know, we, I mean, and so it's grassroots, it's, you know, they, all of these organizations, you know, give back to the community a ton. I don't think that we really need to go take them over a barrel or have them sign contracts for small amounts of money, but I do, do a hundred percent agree with large amounts of money, and I said this in the last meeting, could we have a threshold? You know, over a certain amount, you have, we would prefer that you do this, this, and this, over this amount, we would ask that you provide this, this, and this. Like, if we really want to get technical on this, but to have a blanket go across the board and make everybody give us the same stuff, when what they're asking for isn't the same volume or amount, or they're not providing the same type of services, I start to think the more we start adding to this list, it gets back to my original question of can we pare it down? So, you know, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Alson.
Hi, sorry for the frenzy of hand waving. So I just wanted to address, you know, a couple of things. First of all, I tend to agree with most of Counselor Laffin's, probably all of Counselor Laffin's comments in the beginning. I also agree with the sentiment that some of these organizations are quite small, and while this may be a fairly easy ask for people to come up with, as far as, you know, a balance sheet and a P and L, I sheet and a P and L, I also recognize, you know, being part of several charitable organizations that don't get money from a town, for the record, the, like, you're on a voluntary basis, right? And, and a lot of times this information isn't necessarily just readily available for an organization that is tiny. So I'm not saying that, you know, the Soccer League or the Little Leagues are, are tiny, but relatively speaking, you know, they're quite small, it's quite small amounts. The other issue or the other consideration that I wanted to address is trying to address something where, where, say, we're wondering if there are underprivileged people being served. I would assume as a charitable organization that there is some level of underprivileged in every single organization, otherwise they wouldn't be enough for private. I would also say that, you know, anybody could argue as to who is underprivileged. I think that it is a very hard thing to define, and, you know, respectfully, not at all trying to pick holes. I just think it's a, I think it's something that, of course, you know, we can say that a Little League is, is serving some level of underprivileged kids by, you know, possibly, you know, reducing the rates for parents or, or like in general, or providing some sort of free or reduced participation rates. But then I'm, I, you look at something like the Columbus House, then it's kind of glaringly ob, or glaringly obvious that there would be underprivileged there. Additionally, you know, some of our larger organizations like the Coalition, I, I would say that just knowing their client base in general and having, you know, gotten the minutes and agenda for a lot of their meetings as part of the council, you know, there is a lot of, it, it's something that we continuously do see in regard to a lot of these organizations. I don't think any organization is taking money and gaining, you know, helping people who don't need help. And ultimately, a lot of these smaller nonprofits that we're giving money to are, you know, affecting, are, are working with children. So I also agree with Counselor Reynolds regarding, you know, should there be a threshold? I'm wondering if there is cause to call this year sort of a, a pre, pre-run of this idea that the organizations will have to provide this level of detail. I, of course, don't have a problem with this letter going out. I just hope that as we are kind of laying it on them, kind of late in the game, which has also been a sentiment passed around, I think that making this kind of a pilot year where we say this is the level of detail and, you know, we still can obviously analyze all of this data and, and use it as a precursor to years to follow. I think that them having the information this year that going forward, we're going to be requesting it if they're getting money from the town, I think that could also be something that as the mayor is preparing the budgets and assigning or not assigning funding to these various organizations, he also would be able to use this, you know, kind of template of a letter to say this is what the council's going to want to see as part of the packet. This is probably what he wants to see as part of this information. So I just, I just hope that we don't go too strongly into this first year of asking for this information. Did you lose me?
We just lost the video. We have the audio.
Okay, good. Okay, cool. You don't really need to see me. I'm not doing anything. So the, so that's really like the entirety of my comments. I am just, I'm just hesitant because this was a little bit of a surprise to me, too. Not in that I don't think that we should have this level of detail. It's just more, it does seem late and it does seem fairly responsive to some things that have been, you know, brought to the council recently, where I think, you know, if we're doing our due diligence, this is definitely information that we would want to have going forward. I would just hope that when we're reviewing the information that they're providing, we do give them some leeway as far as, you know, this being a shorter timeline. So that's really all I have. I don't agree that we should put in anything regarding underprivileged because I think that underprivileged is, is kind of the reason a lot of these places exist and, or these agencies or organizations, as we're calling them, exist. So that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the council? Counselor Fishbine?
This isn't the first time we've done this. I would suggest that we just send out the letter that we sent out last year. We can do that tomorrow. And quite frankly, entities have families apply for assistance. There are loan programs, I think the YMCA has a program where families can, can apply for, you know, so those are specific programs that I would be in favor of supporting through this process and, and moving forward. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counselor Laffin.
Yeah, I just wanted to add or point out that amongst this sum of money we're talking about, $60,000 is for the Wallingford Chanza Authority subsidy. So I don't think we're going to do much with that. And $636,000 plus is for the senior center, and then $175,000 is for the senior bus. So that's $872,000 taken out of the 1.3 million of everything else we're talking about. So we're really looking at $440,000 for the social services contributions, not 1.3 million, just to, to put things in perspective. And I'm just still uncomfortable with the, the timeline. This is something we should have done in January.
Thank you. Anyone else from the council? Anyone from the public on this? Ms. Gross?
I think it's a, a good idea. I just have a question regarding the P and L and the balance sheet. With that information, what would you, how would you use that information in deciding whether an organization or an entity received its funding?
So that's a great question. I think this gets sort of back to Counselor Testa's question about like, what's the criteria, right? And I don't think we have a well-determined set of criteria. So I think the, the goal was to sort of come up with what's sort of the basic financial data to give you the idea of what the organization's, what they're about, I suppose, or what the likelihood that they're going to be around, you know, for any period of time, that kind of thing. But I don't think that we have a defined set of criteria. And this is sort of the information we've always asked for and have gotten sort of sporadically, but, you know, we haven't really used it before. So I think it's just a, again, this is the start of a larger conversation about what, you know, where we are going forward.
So a 990 versus a P and L and a, and a balance sheet, that information, and depending on the size of the organization, is available in a 990, which has 12 months worth, worth of data, where an organization is a snapshot in time, maybe less than 12 months. It could be two months, depending on when the fiscal year begins. So a 990, or maybe a couple of years' worth of 990s, might be more effective than just a regular P and L and balance sheet that's produced. And usually a 990 is prepared by an accountant or an accounting firm, so, and a P and L might be just something, a volunteer, or I shouldn't say just, I don't mean it that way, but something that is done more quickly versus something where you're gathering a year's worth of data. A 990 also has a lot more information about the organization, who the people are in the organization, their positions and so on and so on. So I'm just thinking, as an outsider looking in, a 990 might be more effective than asking if that's, if they do actually file one or have to file one. So that's my thought on that. And I also want to stress the fact that a lot of the organizations are, you know, they may have a budget or whatever, but a lot of them have a tremendous amount of volunteers that you have no idea what goes on behind the scenes and the value that that goes in within an organization. So I just wanted to say that. And I also wanted to say, if you are using a bank statement or a, a balance sheet to decide whether someone gets funding or not, back to the, you know, Mr. Tester, Counselor Testa's about the Little League, you know, they've got money in the bank sometimes for other projects that are bigger and beyond what you see on a piece of paper. Sometimes going out to the organizations and actually seeing what they do and how they use the money might also be something you might think of doing, just FYI. And the other thing that goes kind of, and I, I don't mean this anything against funding that was distributed during ARPA, but if you want to look at a balance sheet, Gaylord had $72 million in their bank. You gave them $500,000. And I'm not saying they're not a good organization. They are a great organization. But all I'm trying to say is looking at, sometimes looking at a snapshot or a piece of paper doesn't give you an idea of what the organization really does or how they're going to use their money. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else on this topic? Sir?
Bill Comer for Broadview Drive. A couple of things. Counselor Fishbine actually brought all this up, I think it was 2010. And virtually said the statements, same statements he did today as he did back in 2010, because he, he made the statement, and these are my words from, from recalling what he stated, in my opinion. He was kind of upset, not to the point that he wanted to give them the, the money, he did, but he wanted to know where the money was going. And he asked the mayor, Dickinson at the time, he's like, "Mayor, how are we supposed to be able to, to give them the money? It's not, it's a bad thing. We don't even know where it's going. We don't have any backup. It's all about the backup," he says. "We don't have anything." And I have a copy of the videotape, actually. I was pretty impressed that, that here we are, years later, we're, we're discussing the same thing. And as the council changes, the only thing that doesn't change is the lack of backup with whatever you get. So you're relying and you're making decisions based upon whoever's sitting in front of you was telling you the truth. Many times you're getting false or misleading information. That's a fact. And I'll bring it up at the next town council meeting, an organization that brought you guys misleading information, but you wholly funded the whole organization. That, that, that's, that's one thing. And actually, Mayor Dickinson stated, "Well, moving forward, we're going to demand all this stuff." Pretty much the same thing that you guys are talking about today. Fast forward, what, 15 years later, and nothing's changed, other than they get the money. Also, you know, maybe $400,000 that, as, as Counselor Laffin stated, maybe that's not enough. Maybe you need to do $750,000 because there's other people that need a, a piece of that pie, too, but they, they don't have the opportunity, which is what I brought up at the last meeting. I asked, "Do you need the secret handshake? You got to be part of the good old boys club in order to get on the list?" Because there might be other organization, Miami on a time limit, I see you looking at the clock. Okay. I, I, I'm, I'm concerned that they, they don't have the same ability. Maybe like Counselor Fishbine said, may, maybe something, it, it would be an impetus, "Okay, maybe we can help out other kids that really need the money." Because one of my things is, is the fundraising, which I'm, I'm, I'm a big proponent for. Every time I go to Eastside Market, I ask all the soccer players or lacrosse or cheerleaders or whatever, to give me their best speech because, you know, whether I'm donating 50 bucks or 100 bucks, I want them to, to, to know that the people that are there want or take interest in this. Then I would ask some of these other things that you fully fund, "How much fundraising did you do?" And you'll be surprised how, how, certain ones, zero. And I bring that up every year. "How much did you save?" "We don't have to answer the questions." "Okay, well, if you didn't do anything, and you're just, you're just coming here, we expect this money, and you're not doing anything." You know, Wallingford Historic Preservation Trust, they do fundraisers, you know, all these other entities that only get a small piece of the pie. They're out there fundraising, they're shaking the can, they're doing car washes, they're do, they're doing other things. I have more respect for one of those organizations than, than a free handout. I've got a couple of things here. Bear with me. Oh, one of the other things, I, I only went to one Board of Education meeting back in the day, and it was like I was thrown, it was like I hit the, the beehive with the fire hose, because I asked about the pre-buy system. And back in the day, Board of Education would get a certain amount of money, say it's $100 million. Then they either had to spend it or they would lose it. So they had the system called pre-buy. So say they had an extra $3 million left over. They would just go out there and have a spending spree. They bought things that they never even used. Matter of fact, there's stuff up at Board of Education that's been sitting there so long that it's on pallets outside and the pallets rotted away underneath the equipment that they bought. Now, is that a waste of money? I would think so. So if I was sitting up there, I, and I'm not, I'd be asking the Board of Education, "When did you buy it? You told us you needed the money." And, and to, and to Counselor Todd's statement that she made before, "We gave you the money, Board of Education, we assumed that you used it." This is a whole town department that, that has a bigger budget than, than the administration does. And you, you assumed that they used it, and they didn't. So you're assuming that these nonprofits are using it with good intentions, and then, then you're finding out they, that they don't. So back to the Board of Education, I asked about this backhoe that they bought. They didn't need a backhoe. They never use a backhoe. Public Works has a backhoe. They could have easily borrowed one of theirs for the amount of hours that they put on this thing. So, so the guy really wanted one because he's got all this money to squander. They, they wrote up this bid specifications, well, unfortunately, the one that he wanted, the shiny one up at WY Clark, didn't.
Mr. Comerford?
Yes.
Can you, can you roll this back into the item we're talking about, which is the?
Yeah, yeah. So, so, so they end up buying this backhoe, and it's got air conditioning, it's got cruise control, it's got satellite radio on it. My backhoe doesn't, and, and, and I think that if the, if you guys knew that the Board of Education was doing that, you would have said, "You know what? You don't need the funds." But the way it's structured now is, we have to give them a certain threshold, so that threshold keeps going up and up and up, we have no idea where the money goes. Same thing with these organizations. If you don't know where it's going, but they keep asking, of course, I, I would ask, too. I, I'd keep asking, you'd be a fool not to. But you should also find out where the money's going, because someone else that probably could use, need and utilize it better deserves it more than the people that are afraid to answer questions in front of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, back to the council. Mr. Fishbine?
Yeah, I'm not going to, I just, Mr. Chairman, I just take umbrage with something you said to one of the members of the public about the backup. You said, "We really haven't used it before." I, I do look at the backup. I have, I have used the backup. I have used the backup in the course of my deliberations on the budget. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Duly noted. Thank you, Mr. Fishbine. Madam Clerk, will you kindly call the roll?
Allenson?
Yes.
Carmody?
Yes.
Fishbine?
No.
Laffin?
No.
Regan?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tata?
Yes.
Testa?
Yes.
Maron?
And I vote yes. Motion passes. All right, seeing no other business on the agenda, this meeting is adjourned. All right, seeing no other business on the agenda, this meeting is adjourned.